I will call the I will, I will call the meeting of the Thursday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Meeting of the Berry City Planning Commission to order. And the first item on the agenda is adjustments to the agenda. Does anybody have any adjustments they want to suggest? My only, my only suggestion is maybe to move the old business, the review of the municipal plan to um after item six B. Just because the other things we have people here or we have. I hope you know, decisions and things we might take. So if that's, if that's okay with folks. I'd like to do that.
That seems reasonable.
Okay, uh, do we need to take a vote on that? Okay, so then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is public comment. Is there anybody uh from the public who wishes to make a comment or speak to something that is not on our agenda? Okay, if not. Uh, we can move on to approval of the minutes of the May ninth meeting. Anybody have any want to make a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Here we have a motion. And we have a second. Is there any discussion? Are there any changes proposed or anything? If not, we can take a vote on the minutes. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, so we have adopted the minutes from May ninth. So now we move to new business. We have the infill study. Um, I'm going to turn it over to you, Janet.
Thank you, David. Uh, I'd like to introduce to all of you uh present tonight from the Center Vermont Regional Planning Commission. Is Brian Voight. He's our natural resources planner on staff there. And he and one of his counterparts has uh put together. Uh, Brian's done the lion's share of this work, all the data analyses and mapping. Uh, for an infill analysis for Berry City. Which is gonna end up being a phenomenal tool for not only us as a planning commission. Um, but you know, regional partnership partners and future planning. Um, it was a lot of work, a lot of time, and um I'm really excited to uh get the tools when Brian's totally done with it. So with that, uh, Brian, take it away.
Thanks, Janet. Uh, hi, everyone. I don't know that I've met uh that most of you, but Janet, I'm gonna have to just have you come around with me and do my introductions all the time. That was pretty, uh, pretty efficient and certainly uh represents what I do uh quite well. Um, and I just want to note that I do know it's not June fourth. This was the presentation that I gave to the, the city council um and uh just didn't update the, the date, but it's the, uh, the same content. So. I'm gonna talk tonight about this infill analysis that we've done. So to give you a a status update of, of where we are, but I think it's really important to note um sort of two things here. Uh, one is that um we're looking at development potential. We're not making any decisions about where development should go. We're identifying places where development could go. And uh, I really see this presentation to you all as the, the start of the conversation, not the uh, the only exchange in the, in the dialogue. So um I have, uh, I do have to leave at, at six uh tonight. Um, so I'll, I'll definitely be wrapping up by then, but happy to take questions at uh at any point uh throughout. Um, please just chime in. I'm gonna have to minimize uh your faces, so I can actually see the, the slides here. So with that, um again, just uh, just chime in if you have questions along the way. Otherwise, we can uh talk about things at the end as well. So. The, the project partners for this effort included uh city staff, the housing task force and CVRPC, and we received some funding from the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, and then also uh some funding just through our regular CVRPC uh work. Public interest objective here really is to look for opportunities to support development of housing for both near and long-term flood recovery. Um, basically trying to offset any losses to the grand list by um by buyouts. So maintaining or hopefully even expanding the, the grand list. And providing uh better and more housing opportunities for um current and future residents in the city. And we, we sort of focus on two primary deliverables. Deliverable one is geared towards municipally owned properties and ideally uh with that, we're uh produced an inventory of vacant uh and municipally owned properties. And summarize the, the information related to um, to those properties. And I'll, I'll present some of those results here in a minute. Uh, the second deliverable looked at prospective um subdivision and infill development opportunities under both the current zoning and the um, and the home act. And so what we did uh for this piece, and this uh was focused on privately owned property, but looked at um property within each of the zoning districts and uh started the process of identifying which parcels might um be a good match for subdivision and additional development. So we, we looked at sort of two groups of, of data. So information related to development readiness. So we, we phrase this as enabling factors. So things like the, the zoning district, whether or not it's within a state designated area. Is it part of the, the TIP district? Is it a lower middle income block group? Environmental justice focused population and on down the, the list. So lots of different uh enabling factors. And, and I should mention at this point that we looked at these factors at the parcel scale. So not just looking at a particular zoning district. We're, we're, we essentially went through parcel by parcel uh for the entire city. And um associated the data that we see in the list here with those parcel level boundaries. And so as a, a quick example here, we see in blue the building footprints. Uh, in pink, those are areas that uh are off limits to uh or potentially off limits to development. And I'll talk about those development limiting factors here in a minute. And then the um, the areas in green represent those areas with no limiting factors uh at that particular location. So just a snapshot of a, a single parcel and up in the top of that table on the right-hand side, we see things like the zoning district, the overlay district, whether or not it's in the downtown, the TIP district. Uh, any of the environmental justice uh flags, income, language or, or race. And so for each of the thirty-two or thirty-four hundred parcels in the city, we have this level of granularity of data um assigned to each one of those parcel boundaries. Again, just running down the, the list and you see that the, the list of data attribution is, is fairly extensive. Um, and then in terms of development limiting factors, we looked at the, the following. So steep slopes. Areas where the, the slope steepness is greater than twenty-five percent, flood hazard areas, floodways. River corridors, small stream buffers. So looking at any of those streams where uh the DEC has not delineated a river corridor and simply applying a fifty-foot buffer um to those uh streams, wetlands, information, uh conserve land. And then uh information related to uh landslides uh point locations, which uh was provided by the city uh following the July storm of, of last year. So again, not really wanna, not really trying to focus in on um the, the too much of a, a level of a detail here, but just showing some quick snapshots of what the various data, the, the limiting factors look like over this next week sequence of slides. So everything that you see in red uh in this next several slides, those represent the locations where that development limiting factor is, is present. So everything we see in red in this slide represents slopes greater than twenty-five percent. Flood hazard areas, river corridors and small stream buffers. Um, not too many wetlands in the city, so not, not really a, a limiting factor uh necessarily. Um, also not much in the way of protected land, just a small handful of, of parcels that um that meet that metric. And then in blue, we see all of the existing development. So those are the, the building footprints for uh existing structures. And then again, coming back to uh the example parcel here, we see at the, at the parcel level, we've got information on all of those development limiting factors. So that's the, the area in the image to the left that is uh shaded in pink. So things like the special flood hazard area, the river corridor, um, small stream buffer area and, and on down the list. Now, if we look at the, the lower portion of that snippet of the table, we see a percent development restriction. So basically that tells us if we look at all of the development limiting factors and we include building footprints in that, um, but if we look at all the development limiting factors, then I can make a calculation of how much of the parcel is restricted due to one or more of those uh factors. So in this case, it's about fifty percent of the parcel that uh is comprised of uh development restriction, meaning the other fifty percent is potentially uh suitable for some additional development. Now, when we put all of those development limiting factors together to produce this composite image, uh, it is rather striking. Um, the amount of the the city that's comprised of these development limiting factors. And if we zoom out to the, to the geography of the city as a whole, we see that nearly fifty-four percent of the the city, it has at least one uh development limiting factor. Now, um, again, some of these factors may be um things that the city can change in terms of what uh, what, whether or not it's land that's suitable for development. And then others um are gonna be a little bit more hard and fast. So uh, you know, particularly things related to uh flood plans, uh, for example, you know, even in that case, uh, there is the possibility that you could build up uh some elevated structures and so on. So we didn't take into account every possible um future development pattern. We're just sort of looking here for places where we would encourage the city and, and city staff and the planning commission to take a, maybe a harder look at some of these parcels that we have identified as uh suitable for development and to um, you know, plan accordingly around that notion. So um, in terms of summary results, uh, we're first gonna take a look at the municipal property. So we identified a hundred and forty-one municipally owned properties in the city. Removed uh thirty or so of those because they're not actually parcels, they're road right of ways and uh other uh associated things like that. Uh, of those hundred and forty-one or so properties, ninety-three of them are vacant. And we see the um zoning districts that those different properties fall in. And then in parentheses to the right, uh, we see the uh amount of acreage that is uh potentially available for uh, for development. So um, not all of the, the properties are, as you might expect, suitable for uh additional development and um not all of the properties that are held by the city are currently in zoning districts that um can accommodate residential development. And in particular, I'm thinking about the civic and, and conservation uh zoning districts there. Now, um, we, we took a little bit of a deeper dive into the municipal property and looked at those with uh vacant um vacant parcels with somewhere between fifteen hundred and five thousand square feet of available space for development. So nineteen of those municipally owned properties fit the the bill for vacant and uh fifteen hundred to five thousand square feet of available space. And we see the, again, the list of properties or the council properties in the, the various zoning districts. So these are properties that maybe aren't um ideal for major development, but uh could be host locations for accessory dwelling units or uh tiny houses or other sort of smaller structures to uh provide um another flavor of housing uh in the, in the city. And then you see the other uh statist- uh statistics associated with those uh, with those properties that we identified here. And so we see um some example parcels here, and I intentionally leave the locations off. It's not really the intent of tonight's conversation to debate the suitability of any one parcel. It's more about helping you all understand the the process that we went through and um hopefully that will help you better understand the, the data that we're providing at the, at the end. So over on the left-hand side, we've got a, a tenth of an acre parcel, pretty small. Pretty small space. Um, no development uh limiting factors present. There's no structure currently on this parcel. And so it could be uh, again, potentially suitable for um a tiny house or, or some type of smaller uh development. So that's the best case scenario is we find these parcels like the one on the left-hand side where all the developable areas sort of a a contiguous space and in, in a, in a shape that, that kind of makes sense. And we contrast that with the the parcel over on the, the right-hand sides um highlighted in, in blue. That represents about uh uh five one-hundredths of an acre, a really small property, but also a pretty funky shape. So even if it was um uh, a larger parcel, it might still be difficult to uh accommodate new development there. Again, given the, the shape of the, the parcel. So you know, our approach doesn't provide all of the answers, but I do think that it takes us a long way down the path to um identifying potential areas for development, as I, I've mentioned before. And we've also used um some further data processing to hopefully help us weed out the parcels like the one on the right-hand side from consideration. So we can uh shorten that list and, and really help you focus on priority lo- locations as opposed to having to review all uh three thousand plus parcels in the city. Um, and then in terms of the larger municipally owned uh properties, uh eighteen of those, so greater than five thousand square feet of available space for development. There's eighteen uh of those. And we see the, the breakdown here by zoning district, overlay district, uh et cetera. We see a couple of different um example parcels here where the, the parcel on the left, uh a half acre um a half acre parcel looks like it could be potentially a good candidate for some future development. Over on the right-hand side, we see a parcel that's about two tenths of an acre. This is a, actually a parking lot and a parcel that I believe has been under discussion for uh some potential development uh already. And I think the, um, the one thing that's really interesting about this is that it's located adjacent to another municipally owned lot. And so in this case, if the city wanted to develop in this area, they could also potentially um be creative with the, the parcel boundaries. And maybe that requires a, a lot line adjustment or some other uh type of activity to uh open up some additional space for um extra development at that location. Okay, moving on to the um, the private property side here, we identified um almost fourteen hundred parcels with more than five thousand square feet of uh available uh space for development after we weed out those from the conservation and industrial districts where uh, you know, we, we shake free another twenty. So we're still ri- about, right about at that uh thirteen hundred and fifty or so uh count of um parcels. And we see again, that same breakdown that I presented in the, the previous slides, uh, the count of parcels by their zoning district. And then in this slide here, it's the area measured in acres of uh available space for um additional development based on those parcel counts. So um lots of potential space, but again, not all parcels are uh, are created equal. Some are certainly going to be better suited for um additional development while, while others may not be. So here's an example of a, a parcel that looks uh on its face to be a, a good candidate for subdivision or for the um, the inclusion of an accessory dwelling unit. And I'm not gonna go through all the, the factors on the right. Those are um the different development, limiting and development enabling factors. And again, just uh to repeat, all of that information is uh stored at the parcel level. So for every parcel in the city, we have all of this uh information assigned uh to those um parcel boundaries. Here's uh an example of a, another parcel that is a potentially a, a good candidate for um subdivision. The issue with this and the reason it's it's labeled as a potentially constrained parcel is that really the best um solution for additional development here would yield a flagpole um parcel, which uh is, I believe, not allowed uh under your current zoning, or maybe that's something that you're discussing uh as part of your your zoning changes. So a development opportunity um hindered potentially only by zoning. So something that the city could uh discuss and make uh additional changes to, to free up some additional space for development. And then here's uh an example of what I'm calling an unconstrained uh parcel. This is a, a parcel located, uh, it's a corner lot. Um, Janet uh suggested that this may be a case where uh it's a, it's actually a double lot. And we sort of went down this path, um, talking about double lots and the fact that um there are many of them throughout the city and that uh with properties changing hands, there are potentially even property owners that uh don't really know or consider their parcel to be a double lot. So um, in this case, again, really good potential for taking this double lot and uh splitting it back up into two individual lots and um looks like there's a, a clear opportunity for something like that to happen here. So again, I'm not trying to single in on this one parcel as the, the solution to a, a housing problem. I'm just saying these are the kinds of parcels that we were trying to identify through our analysis to help you all um you know, conduct outreach and, and do further investigation as to whether or not a, a particular location would be suitable for, for development. And then here's uh an example of a, a large lot, uh currently no development on that, uh about eight and a half acres of space with no development uh limiting um factors on that uh particular parcel. So you know, that's um, that's really in some ways uh the, the easy part, you know, assembling all this data, even though it's time consuming, it's all data that we were able to acquire either from the, from the state or from city staff uh to um assign that information at that, that parcel scale. And we've, I think, been successful in weeding out parcels that don't necessarily, at least on their face, on paper, don't look like uh attractive locations for trying to uh include additional development. And have produced this list of about the thirteen hundred and fifty or so parcels list and and maps that um are ready then for, for taking the next step. So in terms of reporting, uh, we've got tables of the parcel inventory for all of the uh municipal properties and a map of the, the parcel locations that we can, we can share out. For the private property, this is where it gets a little bit uh trickier, I think. And um we need to, to recognize that there is a fairly significant amount of information available. It is public information, so it's not that we need to or should uh intentionally hide the information, but I do think in matters like this where you're talking about uh development suitability on privately held property, that um it is important to respect the fact that these are private properties. And so for city staff and for uh planning commission use, I, I certainly see it as a valid to um supply with, with all this information. I would ask the, the commission uh just like I asked the, the city council and just like we've discussed with uh city staff. Um, you know, to be judicious with the, the handling of the data. The, the um, the worst thing that could happen is for uh, I think uh in the scenario for a private owner, a private landowner to uh get the feeling that the city is telling them that they need to redevelop their property. So um, again, we in tabular form have all of this information at the, at the parcel scale with uh the span number, the tax ID, uh unique tax ID number as well as a lot of the grand list uh information. And in addition to that, um, you know, because with the municipal properties, it's a, it's a really small number. It's a lot easier to represent that on a map. Um, we don't necessarily want to use the same approach here, I don't think. And um, I'd certainly be interested in hearing the, the commission's thoughts on this, but had considered um developing just uh really quickly an online map that you would be able to use uh for your own deliberations to sort of get a better um understanding of the opportunities that are, are out there. Um, and that that wouldn't necessarily be something that's made publicly available, but would be a a, a tool that the commission could use in their uh further investigation of the, the work that we've done here. Um, I'll share this uh slide deck with uh Janet so that she can share it out with all of you. Um, but uh I'm happy to answer questions now. Um, I know I just threw a whole lot at you. So if it takes you a while to digest uh this information, that's uh certainly understandable. And I did invite you just to, to reach out to me directly or uh have Janet to reach out to me with uh any other questions that um that you have.
Yeah, I see Raylene has her hand up.
I was just curious, when you calculated the number of vacant properties, do you know how many of the vacancies are bank-owned properties or repossession homes?
I do not, but if that's information that Janet has, I could certainly build that into the, the data set.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, my question to that would be, Brian, is how, how helpful it is when property owners change so quickly? How do we keep uh these data tables alive and healthy and up to date? When that happens? Is that as simple as every month when we get the property transfers out of the assessing office and the rest of us in city hall update all of our databases, we're doing the same with this one?
That is certainly an approach that we could take. Uh, Janet, it really um yeah, I mean, if you know that properties have changed hands, the, you know, the span's not gonna change. The, the things that might change, well, obviously the, the property owner would change i- in all likelihood. Whether or not there's a homestead declaration um would change, but um it would be a, a fairly straightforward procedure to update that information. And if you want to communicate that out to me, I can update the the data table and, and push that back out to you without a problem. It, it's, you know, minutes worth of work. The, the bulk of the, the work has been done at this point. So just sort of tidying up around the edges isn't uh anything to that, that gives me pause.
That's good to hear. That's, that's an easy, easy way to keep everything alive and correct. Thank you.
Yeah, and moving forward, um Janet, you know, just, just thinking about um these kind of updates, moving forward, the uh Vermont Center for Geographic Information is working with the tax department on actually publishing real estate transaction data and having it already tied to the parcels. And so moving forward, I could actually just pull down a new parcel data set and uh do the merge that way. And um, you know, all you'd have to say is, yep, we had some property change hands in, in the city uh in the past month. And um I can make that update. You know, we're not quite there yet, but later this year, uh, the uh VCGI, the Vermont Center for Geographic Information, will be pushing that data product out.
Sure. Um, I actually keep uh, and for the, some of the commissioners that don't already know this. Um, every month I update the table on the assessing portion of the website. Uh, so you all see the property transfers that have occurred for the prior month. Um, it doesn't have things like, um, it's just a simple table. Grant or grantee, sale price, sale date and the property type. Um, so I wouldn't, uh, it would be a little bit more labor intensive to get you that stuff, but you and I can absolutely talk offline. And I try to figure out which is the best avenue on that one.
So I have a couple of questions. One is if all of this data is public information, what would be the basis for keeping it private? Even though I understand the the logic, if somebody asked for this, why would we be able to say, no, it's private, you can't look, we can't share this data?
I'm not saying that you can't share it. And you're absolutely right that this is all public information. I just think that what you don't want to come out of this process is private property owners feeling like the city or the planning commission or anyone is targeting them specifically and telling them that they need to do something with their land. I think that what you have here is the information to um, you know, build an advocacy campaign around infill development. And you have the, a way to um prioritize folks that you might want to talk to about opportunities that exist on their land. So I, I just think, I, I, I'm just encouraging you to be sensitive about the way that the data is shared, not that you shouldn't share it at all.
So it's more about how we use it than than whatever. I, you know, I guess, you know, if the concern is people who aren't on the planning commission or aren't involved in this, decide to take this on and I want to see that and then do their thing. I don't know that we could tell them they can't. That's, that's all. That's that's all.
No, I I I totally agree with you, David.
And my my other question is, you know, thinking kind of the next step, if we start identifying these properties, you know, one of the restraints to development now is the cost relative to what how much it costs to do this work as compared to what somebody could expect to get selling the property or renting it or whatever. And I I think Janet's seen some people come in and talk about ADUs until they start pricing it out and then say, well, this doesn't make sense. You know, I'd like to do it, but it's costing me more than I'll, you know, my my costs are more than than I can get in rent. So I don't, so that's that's not really being answered by this, but I think in terms of doing outreach and things, we need to give some thought to how we address those things or have a package of of programs or things that can help overcome that, those hurdles. So those were my kind of questions and comments. Does anyone else have anything they want to add? Yes, Becky.
I guess I'm curious if there's any kind of analysis that you can do that would help us identify what kind of changes to our zoning would be most impactful? Like, I I appreciate the examples of like this, this is limited by, you know, not allowing the flagpole lots and that sort of thing. Like, is there any meta-analysis that says, you know, if we made these three or five changes, we would unlock I don't know, fifty percent of the, you know, like the restrictions that are are preventing development at this point?
So I don't have an answer for that yet, but I certainly think that's something that Janet and I could talk about further and we'll bring in Eli, one of our community planners as well to see if we can get a better sense of where some of those pinch points might be that you could that you could free up by by changes in zoning.
You know, one of those things, many of those things are things we're addressing in the in the interim zoning that's going to the city council. We'll address many of those things and also cost-wise, just because if you can put a duplex or a triplex on that piece of property, the same as a single family, the unit cost starts to go down.
Right.
So there are some things there. I think there might also be things that aren't necessarily zoning, but are in our subdivision regulations or building building standards that add cost to putting properties in that maybe sometime we should have a discussion of. So for example, putting electric lines underground is a is a desirable thing in many ways, but it also adds to the cost of every property lot that's developed. Having sidewalks on both sides of the street adds the, or on either, having sidewalks at all adds to the cost of each lot on the street and, you know, adds maintenance costs to the city. And I'm not suggesting we should change those things. I'm just suggesting we should maybe understand some of those things, because when developers look at this stuff, that's what they're looking at. And they're they're doing their math to figure out, you know, how much, how much they need to get out of a lot and and so on. So those are you know, each one of those things can add a few thousand dollars to each lots, maybe more than that even cost. So just, those are some things we we probably want to address. And I don't even know if they're in the scope of what the planning commission does, because they're not necessarily zoning. But there are other requirements that that, you know, have costs associated with them.
I mean, David, I think that's a a great point. And even if it's outside the the purview of the planning commission, I don't know the the specifics of the division of labor at the at the city level, but tying tying requirements to economic costs is information that that should be used to to discuss this. So even if it's not you all that have the decision-making authority, bringing that to the city council to talk about something that you see as a hindrance to potential affordable development would be, I think, a conversation that's worth having.
Were there any other questions or comments? I know you're on a tight timeframe, like you should have left three minutes ago or something.
Yeah.
Well, but just want to make sure there's nothing else. It was a very informative presentation and we appreciate it. And I think we'll have some some work to do once we can get a look at the maps really and and dig into them. And for all of us, you know, the neighborhoods we live in are probably a good place to start, because you'll 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 look at the map and you'll 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 have a you know, your Google Maps aerial picture of it in your mind at the same time.
Great. Well, I look forward to engaging with you all on this in the future and just don't hesitate to reach out if you have other questions or ideas for additional work here.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Very impressive.
Yep, thanks all.
Okay, so we have done the infill study presentation that moves us to the public meeting for mitigation actions ranking instructions. So again, I'll turn things over to Janet that there was some material in the in the packet. I hope you got a chance to look at.
Yeah, and even even if you haven't, Keith, Keith from CVRPC, who's with us this evening, knows this stuff like the back of his hand. So he's going to be walking us through the whys and the wherefores of this. First off, let me introduce to you Keith Coven, CVRPC's Emergency Management Planner. He's helping us with the Hazard Mitigation Plan. As you know, we had currently have an expired plan, so we're trying to get it wrapped up and done and over to FEMA for approval here pretty quickly. So this is one of the last pieces that we need to do with a public meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong, Keith?
That's correct.
And really trying to get more public input besides city staff on what is important out there in the city and what the lay of the land. And Keith and I thought this would be a great place to get, you know, five or six other opinions on, you know, what did you see last year and does it make sense to make this a priority and not this a priority? So with that, Keith, welcome to Berry City's Planning Commission. You can see everybody's name on there. And I am going to let you take it away, please.
Okay, I'll run through a real quick slide decks just to help explain this. Yeah, that's it. Keith Coven, as I, hopefully you all can see my slide deck here, because I roll too fast. Just a real quick background, local hazard mitigation plans, you know, it's just a way for the town, owner, city to plan for mitigation to try to prevent prevent disaster damages where possible. You know, obviously sometime, you know, huge events like last year, you know, you're never going to stop all the damages from something like that, but you know, we can mitigate where possible. This is just the disaster declarations since Irene in our region. You know, it's, we've had twenty-nine is the total we've had, you know, that does count COVID, because infectious diseases are considered natural disasters. We have to align the towns plan with the state hazard mitigation plan. That's the slide of the hazard assessment from the state plan. Just to give you that kind of overall idea of what we're, what the the requirements are for this. And one of the big things that's new that came out in the beginning of twenty twenty-three, FEMA updated the rules and it came up with what's called the STAPLE evaluation, which stands for Social, Technical, Administrative, Political, Legal, Economic, and Environmental. Huge mouthful. So what we're what we're going to do here tonight and is try to do the mitigation actions and just review them with that STAPLE framework. This is a slide just giving you a general example of what what it looks like kind of when it's done. Originally, it was in a Word document. I've tried to move away from that to go to a slightly easier Excel sheet. Just so it breaks down easier, is easier to work with. Actually, now I will share that and hopefully will have got a copy of this. So on working with this, both with the with the town and with the with, also with the public meeting we had and collecting ideas from the survey that we've had in the town, an online survey. We, I had compiled all those ideas for mitigation actions and listed it. I broke it down by what the, oh, this is actually, sorry, this is the one from Waterbury.
No, it is ours. The Waterbury to Berry City.
Okay, yeah.
And I changed it when I sent it out to everybody.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, now I closed it completely and have to find it again. But yeah, I reviewing all the different disaster types and disasters that have hit the town, you know, and just trying to compile that, putting it into each different that each different disaster has a mitigation action for it. I've just been trying to collect that and we're bringing it to you to try to do that that review and just rank them so that we have some level of prior prioritization for this. FEMA requires this now in these newer plans that there is some level of ranking and just they basically want, because FEMA uses what's called a benefit cost analysis for any kind of funding that they generally do for hazard mitigation. And it's kind of like they took that idea and wanted to break it down to the town level and just getting towns to think about, you know, trying to get that biggest benefit for anything, you know, that it'd benefit the most different things and that it you know, an idea of the cost. You know, I mean, obviously, most mitigation actions require grant funding. You know, just like the current funding that's out there now for hazard mitigation that the state has been advertising the ninety million from last year's disaster. You know, they just wanted people to try to think that through and, you know, come up with the best metric they can for that. Sorry, trying to navigate the computer and talk at the same time or beyond my capabilities.
So we're not gonna, are we ranking them like, like one through eight, like literally one through eight or like what we think is more important than another one?
What all I, all I actually need is it ranked, just it's so for each one of those columns that would have either, you can use either a one, zero, or negative one. And there, in the sheet I had sent you, it has a kind of a a thing on the side and on sheet two, it actually has like instructions in case you you need them for ranking. Cost benefit is just yes or no, estimated cost, I mean completely, you can guess, there's no, there's no right or wrong answer for any of this. It's just trying to get that idea of what works for you, what you would like to prioritize as far as hazard mitigation. You know, and that's it. When it's done, I'll just compile all the different scores, all the different ratings, we'll take it back to the city staff. You know, put that kind of basically wrap it up. Put, it will go in the plan. Obviously, most of the the highest ranking things will you know, ideally, those will all get listed as a mitigation action in the plan. We'll try to determine a funding source and who has, who at the town would be the authority to try to make sure that happens and also lay it out in, because these plans are for a five-year time cycle. Try to make an estimate of when that would actually happen.
So is this just something that the planning, that a lot of different groups or people fill out and then it gets compiled, or is this something that the city does kind of one thing? So for example, do, should each planning commissioner fill this out and fill in all the numbers? Should each, just should the planning commission as a group talk through it and come up with a planning commission thing? Or how does that, how is this going to be completed?
Uh, it can be done either way. It's kind of up to you, you know, if if you would like to walk through the whole thing this evening. You know, it's just the amount of time that could take, might be longer than you actually want to contribute if you want to just take. My estimate is to run through it and just really ballpark it, you know, like I said, you don't have to do a real deep thought into most of the, most of the things or even coming up with the the cost. About a half hour to, you know, and I will, and I'll compile those, you know, it's really, this is a new action. Like I said, we've we've been planning around with it. No one in the state has come up with a good answer yet exactly how this is working and I'm not sure, to be honest, in my opinion, I'm not sure how much thought FEMA put into the new rule on this one. Because there's been a lot of questions. I have one plan that went in with this from Cabot. I didn't, at least on this part, I didn't get any kickback as far as how it was scored. They just basically, it's, they just want to see that exercise that the municipality has thought of some and actually engaged with a little bit larger group of discussion of the mitigation actions.
And I'm not intending that we necessarily fill this out tonight. I'm just asking, should individuals do it? Should the group try to do it and, you know, put it on an agenda for a meeting where we kind of go through these one by one and start scoring? You know, I have concerns that some of this stuff, at least for me, some of it, I have no clue what those things are about. And and other things you know, make sense, but are seem like small actions and others seem like big things, but who knows how, I don't have a ability to figure out or even make a wild guess about how much they might cost.
Yeah, and like I said, as far as the cost, that's not, to be honest, it's not not as important, to be honest, it's more that you're thinking about the life safety property and whether it's technological, technologically feasible, you know, I mean most, most everything that's on here is is feasible, it's realistic, could be done. I don't think I've put anything on here that was so in the, out in the weeds that, you know, we're we're not requesting Elon Musk's boring machine to come dig a channel under the river to protect us from flooding.
Right. You know, just as an example, I see Cabo Hill Road, Water Main in Brook needs buried.
Yes.
I'm not familiar with it. I don't know what that's about. I don't know why it needs to be buried or why, what it would accomplish. You know, to be able to rank it or whatever, just as an example.
Yes. Yeah, no, I I I completely understand that. And that that's realistically one of the overall issues I have with with this new ranking that FEMA is requiring is they want, they want a public engaged process. But realistically, you would have to have a three-hour meeting to try to, okay, to go through everything to to give enough knowledge, I guess, realistically, for individuals to actually be able to rank it appropriately. You know, it's, that's why I at the June twenty-seventh meeting workshop I'm going to be at for that, I'm going to that up and say, you know, it seems somewhat half-baked of an idea, like I get their intent, but I don't think they thought through the process well enough.
I mean, it may be a different way to go at it would be maybe, maybe the, you know, I'll put it in quotes, the city, so city staff should kind of go through and do all this ranking and put things in and then have the public input when when somebody's already kind of evaluated and and come up with ideas and then take based on the public input, either that's it, or maybe there's changes that need to be made based on things people bring. I don't, I don't know, it's just a difference.
No, no, that's a, that's a valid perspective, David. And actually, I you know, to be honest, because of the issues with implementing this, I definitely I'm still trying to work around how to implement their their new requirements in the best way possible.
Janet, Janet had her hand up.
Yeah, I just, we're we're on a fairly tight timeline and trying to meet, you know, the public engagement process portions of this and keeping to our timeline. So question, Keith, if we didn't literally do line by line by line and maybe a a, you know, two or three people would be willing to spend an hour and send, send to me their their sheets.
Yes.
I want to be able to say we we did what we were supposed to do. We got the information that we attempted to get. And I think we're trying to get this to we have to go to city council first? We have to send it off to FEMA first?
No, we can actually, once the plan is, the final plan is drafted, when we hit that final draft piece, we can take it to city council, because the state has changed. Well, both FEMA has changed the requirements on that, that we can get, the city council can do a, what's basically an interim adoption. We can get, the city council can do a, what's basically an interim adoption. So that they adopt the plan, allowing for edits to happen as long as they don't change the uh substance of the plan. And that will increase, that will automatically accept that plan while it's at VM being reviewed. Uh which is currently taking about ninety days. And it will get, it will get interim status, so any FEMA funding for uh both uh the brick grants or uh hazard mitigation. The town will have access to all that funding uh while it's in that interim status, so it used to be, you had to wait until FEMA actually. Approved the plan before it was accepted, they've really speeded that up because of uh. They're so busy with all the natural disasters everywhere in the country. They've speeded up.
So would that automatically improve our ERF score while it's still in process, or does that occur after FEMA gives its blessing?
Uh that would automatically increase that uh, as long as we get that town, the uh bridge and road standards. That'd be the last piece we need to get that ERF score up.
Well, I want to get at least back to twelve from seven and a half.
Yeah.
Get it back up to twelve and then we could get even more, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
So, so just a question Janet. If two or three members of the commission were willing to volunteer to sit down with the sheet and do this. Could you prepare a cheat sheet for us so we would have some idea of? How these things fit together from the city's perspective? Or could, you know, it might be the public works director or some. Some other people, but I just feel as, as laypeople. We could fill this out and it would. If I were looking at it from a professional standpoint, it would be pretty close to meaningless because the people who fill it out. Didn't necessarily have expertise or or. Or knowledge to do big pieces of this, or even necessarily thoroughly understand what all these things mean. You know, both the rows and the columns.
Keith, what do you think? Because I was thinking more lines of. If the public engagement portion could be. Rather than do the life safety column and then do the other column, you know, and you'd really get into the weeds and that's why it becomes the three-hour meeting.
Yeah.
Because you take each line and you go zero, one, or minus zero, and you can pretty much get through your, the table and. In um a a quick period of time, knowing that some of us are gonna do a deeper dive. If one or two people would be willing. Or would we be okay in that respect? To, to meet this requirement of holding a public meeting?
Yeah, Ken, I would prefer if you filled out with your impressions and then we could look at it. And say, no, I don't agree with that, or, you know, this looks reasonable. And.
Yeah, I can do that too.
And that, that just. That just helps the process in terms of the input, because people are starting with some. At least to me, some, some basis of somebody more in the know has looked at it and, and vetted it a little bit. So I kind of think this looks just like a list of, we had a public meeting and. And all sorts of people had all sorts of suggestions and we just stuck them all in there. Um and some of them, you know, some of them might be minus ones, but. Or might be, might be ones, but the cost is prohibitive. Uh and if you could help. Kind of get it jump-started, then, then. Certainly, I would be willing to be on a group to help do that, but I would feel uncomfortable if this was completely blank to start with. That's just my perspective, I don't know what other commissioners think.
I think silence is.
I would sort of echo what David said, like, I, I would be willing if. If I, you know, was responding to, this is how we've looked at it and ranked these things. Then, you know, saying, okay, this seems like it makes sense. I have a question on this one. Or that one um. And then sort of just concurring with what. Someone who really knows what, what all of these mean. Um has already gone through it.
But if we had three people volunteer, just, just again, I don't know if this is the best way and I don't know what Janet's time is. She filled it out, we had three people volunteer and we scheduled a one-hour meeting. With Janet and those three people and walked through it. And made any edits that we might get from a mutual discussion, would that be effective? I'm trying to think of the quickest and easiest way to get public input. That's, that is, is actually constructive.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we had all the time in the world, we could poll everybody in the city, right Keith? But we're not there, so.
Yeah, exactly.
I think David's suggestion is, is a great one. And I don't want to say but, so I'm gonna say and. Will that get us to the end zone meeting all of our requirements? So if the planning commission gets a little subcommittee. Submits to you stuff from the public meeting.
Yeah, I think that would, I think that would work, uh, we might want to. You you basically kind of, once we have that final uh. Draft, take, you know, obviously, just even email it out to the planning commission. You know, kind of one of those, do you approve of that draft? You know, to be able to move forward.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know.
I really don't want to wait another month.
Exactly.
But after we do, um again, that silly timeline we've got.
Yeah, I would, I would hope of, that a subcommittee could meet in the next two weeks as soon as. As soon as you got, got this done, it should be possible for three people to find. Or four people to find. A mutual time to meet more easily, that's not a planning commission meeting, not a Warren meeting, it's just. You know, a, a not a quorum of the. Commission that could do this and then, and then maybe that the next step would be to email it to the full. Full planning commission with a. Little narrative about. You know, which would help in terms of process, just for narrative of this is how we did it. Probably helps when it goes on to the city council or to the next. Levels to show that there was some thoughtful process. Yes, uh Rosemary had her hand up.
Hi, uh thanks, um if, if this can be done in the next couple of weeks, I, I, I'm gonna be around, so I'd be happy to participate. Just part of the group.
Okay, and Joe?
Um yeah, just likewise, I'm willing to, to be part of that subcommittee if that's what we decide to go with, I like that idea. Um but I think we have a hard cap of three for that, right? Otherwise, we run into quorum issues.
Yes.
Because I think you said three or four earlier, so I think we have a hard cap of three, if I understand right.
We do have a hard cap of three, otherwise it's a, a meeting what. We could do, have a special meeting, but I'm thinking it would be, just be easier to have a smaller group.
Yep.
Uh do it at their convenience and then send, send it out to the full planning commission.
Right, and I could even post where we end up for this public portion on the city website. Uh under the planning commission's page that, you know, this occurred and, and this was discussed and. This is what they passed along to the consultant.
Yeah, but I, you know, I think it could be sent to the planning commission and sort of, so if anybody has any concerns or comments, we'll schedule a meeting, a special meeting. To discuss it and get it done in the timeframe and uh lacking that, if nobody has anything, then it, then it's gonna move on. So, so give an opportunity for the planning commission to meet if, if any one of us has issues with what the subcommittee has, but. Uh my guess is that's not gonna be the case. Does that sound like a plan? Okay, so um.
The two, David, you would be okay with two?
With, well, we can have up to three, so Joe and Rosemary are willing, did somebody else, I think somebody else said they would be willing to do this. Yeah, so Caitlin. So that could be a subcommittee. So kind of leave it to, to. Janet to do the quick run-through and then uh. Set up a meeting with those three and we'll, we'll hear something in a couple of weeks. So we have consensus on that. Well, thanks for uh, all of you for volunteering and, and I, I'm very curious just to see kind of what comes out of it. But I'm, I'm, as I said, I'm having a hard time kind of getting my head around some of the things in it.
Right, um I, some of you are at a city council meeting Tuesday night and there is a lot of talk about. You know, mitigation and recovery and, and, you know, where counselors want to go, um where, where um. Ninety million funding in hazard mitigation, there's three point five, three, something like that, and elevation funding. Um it, it may seem like it's taken forever for the money to get here, but you know. Vermont got money and we have to, they are the powers that be have had to figure out how to disseminate it, right? Um my fear with our hazard mitigation plan is, especially where the city is at currently. With a lot of ideas and a lot of intention is our plan isn't going to. Move. Um so. I appreciate everybody here listening to Keith. And uh at least acknowledging that the planning commission has the ability to work on plans like this, review them, not review them. Um it's just another, it, it is another very important city plan that is a requirement. Um that affects planning and, and what the commission does, so um thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, I think another comment is, you know, mitigation stuff is going to take years. And one of the, just kind of comments in general is. People who don't have a place to live right now because they were flooded out, can't wait for years. For all the mitigation to be done before we do something, so. You know, that's the city council thing to deal with, but they're gonna have to find a balance. And uh make sure they get in all the lines they can for money as soon as possible, that's my, that's my take anyhow. Um that you can't let perfect get in the way of good and, and moving forward and helping. Folks that are, you know, right now having to make decisions. So, that's my editorial. Anything else for Keith? If not, you're welcome to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting. But if, if, if you've got things to do, certainly, uh we appreciate uh. You're going through this and I hope we found a good way to move forward.
No, that, I greatly appreciate that, uh that'll work, uh I'll definitely coordinate with Janet, you know, to uh get this done. Yeah, and any assistance I can uh give, you know, if you want me to attend uh that subcommittee meeting, I can do that as well. You know, to explain any of these that, if they seem. You know, like the Cobble Hill Road, you know, anything like that uh. Because of uh meeting with all the different town staff to, to collect these ideas, uh I generally have at least some background information on almost all of it. Uh but thank you very much for uh letting me attend your planning commission meeting and uh, yep, I will head out, go home and. See my family, I've had too many night meetings lately.
Thanks so much.
Thanks Keith. I'll talk to you next week.
Okay, bye.
Bye.
So that then brings us to old business. Which is review, re- the reviewing this, the um. The city plan, the strategic plan, um but before that, can we just chat for a minute about what's going on with the um? So the interim zoning changes for housing, I think, can go, can go to city council now? So I think we adopted the changes. Um am I, am I correct on that? And Janet did share, you know, some information from VLCT about the process for interim zoning. Uh but.
Sure, I was gonna do that under staff reports, but happy to report now, um we've got a lot going on as we all know. Um I asked Nicholas, the city manager, to um. Ask the city council if they'd be willing to hold their public hearing for the interim zoning, because. As you all know, I eh know, from reading the memo that I've shared two months in a row now. This public hearing for zoning changes under interim procedures has to come from them, it's not. Uh you folks recommending to them and then it's not that long drawn out pro- process. Without them saying anything other than, you know, they acknowledged what Nicholas uh said what I asked him to say. We will be holding our public hearing. Um so what I explained to them and, and what some of you are still familiar with. With any type of hearing, there is a public warning and. Even though we're doing interim zoning procedures, this city council planning commis- uh. City council public hearing still needs a public notice period of fifteen days in advance. And so I asked Nicholas, let's, let's not rush this too much because. For me, it's a report that I have to send to um multiple municipalities, the state, I have to put it in the newspaper. And I want to do it right and make sure that nobody could trip us up on process. Uh that said, uh we were, we, we are on the schedule for July sixteenth. Uh to have that public hearing and um. Part of what I'll put in the, the packet for the city council is a memo, um we have a form that we have to fill out. And I am happy to um, it's, it really shouldn't be any more than, you know, one page. Um because there's, there should be a lot of dialogue. Um teeing up how the process works and why the commission is asking to do it this way. Um I can share that draft memo and make sure that, you know, anybody wants to say, wants me to say anything more. Um it's really a memo from staff that says this is what the commission is gonna do. And then we'll, we'll present the, the draft regulations and uh. Explain what it is that we're trying to accomplish under this one and done procedure. And as I explained to Nicholas, so he's aware of the process and as you saw in. Uh Garrett's memo from the, from the league, the attorney, the league attorney. Um it's effective immediately, there's not even that fourteen-day waiting period after the city council. Um motions uh approval. Um so it, it is a very fast process once we can get there. And I, I'm very confident that this is gonna go very well. Um we're opening the doors to housing, we've got people coming in the zoning office every day now. You alluded to double lots, well, Brian was on talking to us, right? There's a gentleman who didn't realize he had five lots on his property, he thought he owned one big block. Um so he was overjoyed that he's gonna be able to. He doesn't even have to subdivide, he owns five lots, the city just drew a block around all five and that's what you see on the tax map. Um he's gonna sell two of them individually and they, they abut on two different streets, so um there's. You know, there's lots for housing, that's exciting. Um there's someone up on Highland Avenue who wants to put a third apartment into their building. And currently, they can't. Um the zoning district and their score footage only allows them to have two. Um they're trying to get some money through Vhip. Um they can't wait for the zoning to get done, um I wish Vhip. I've sent them an email asking them to extend their process, but even if we get this done on July sixteenth, it's not gonna help them. But they literally don't have to expand the building, they're just reconfiguring. An apartment to make two apartments and this would make. Them and anyone else in a similar, similar situation um happen. Um as David even said, what it boils down to is, you've all opened the doors to, to start to say yes. And then everything else, if it all falls into line, can they afford to do it, right? But that burden doesn't rest with the commission anymore. We've, you folks have allowed that to. To happen quicker.
Well, you know, there's a lot of existing, there, I think there are other landlords. Who have buildings that they would be putting more units in but for the density. Issues and so I wouldn't be surprised if this goes into place and that it brings twenty, twenty apartments. Online over the next six to eight months as quick as some of these folks can do it, because it's. Much less expensive to do that than build a new structure on a vacant lot.
There is, it's still expensive, but less. Yeah, so that's the update.
Okay.
So, put on your calendars to uh any and all of you who can be there, uh to support each other and, and us as we present this to city council. Um and, and uh fingers crossed for sure.
Yeah, and the other thing that was kind of still pending is at some point we need to have a hearing. On the changes to the flood hazard part of the city ordinances. So I.
Right.
That's also, I think, probably should be scheduled, because that does have.
Yes, uh last month in the meeting minutes, you all uh, I don't know if you voted, but there was consent. Uh to move forward with those changes, so I will start the public notice process um. That is your public hearing, we'll do this the, the regular way, you have a public hearing with a proper public notice. This means once you say yes officially to the hazard uh flood regulation changes. Then we have to wait thirty days before we can get in front of. Then we have to wait thirty days before we can get in front of city council and then it's a two-part hearing. But I, there's nothing that, that you've all, uh, consented to change that is going to. Um, hold anybody up for sure. So. We'll just make our way through the process.
So would it be possible? Is there time to have that on the next planning commission agenda?
Yeah, when you and I talked, I, I did not, um, have to count backwards, sorry.
There would be, there would be some thirty days to get it ready, but it's how long it takes you to, uh, you know, what your schedule is.
I would have to have. In order to be ready, in order for, for the planning commission. Hold the official public hearing for the flood hazard changes. I would have to have the report and the, and the. Notice in the newspaper no later than June twenty seventh. So it is, it is absolutely feasible. If, if we wanna, if you want me to start down that path and keep this moving, I'm happy to, to make sure that occurs.
So what do, what do the other commissioners think of that thought? Seeing head nods and thumbs up, so I think we should plan on that. So that will, would be on the agenda for our next. Meeting with a properly warned. A public hearing at. At five thirty at the beginning of, you know, at the beginning of the meeting.
Right, thank you all.
Okay, so now we can get to the whole business that's actually. Which is doing, um. Reviewing the, continuing our review of the municipal plan. So I don't know if you wanna take the lead on that. It's the, the. The portions are in the, um. In the packet. Um, so I don't know if you wanna put them on the screen or just have people go refer to their packet.
Yep, um. Uh, sorry, I, I didn't intend to take the lead, happy to do so. What I did was how I broke all the sections down, uh, those are also now all on the website. Uh, so they're all in sizable chunks and they're all emailable. That was, that was the biggest problem is, um. These PDFs become exorbitant in size, so I really had to start taking section two and, you know, make it even smaller. So.
So you want me to? Uh, lead this or do you?
Let's tag team each other, how about that?
Okay. So economic development, um. Think what you'll find is, you know, a lot of it is, is pretty straightforward. Um, there are some things in here that I think have been completed. Some things that are ongoing. Um, and some things, there may be some things to change, but. I think it's, it's. It's pretty straightforward.
Yes, so section two, this first one, just like section three. Is the whole section, all eight sections. And then what you folks got in your packet was the first two pieces. And I think it only ended up, yeah, it's, it's twenty pages, so it, it wasn't too, too bad, but. Um, as David has said. A lot has changed in a very short period of time for everyone. You know, may- maybe we think that, that are certain key points that aren't as important as others. Not necessarily ranking them, but, um, maybe something else has come out as a, as a thread i- in what we've all been talking about. Right? Certain, certainly our economy does have issues and challenges. Um, so as you, as you read down through and think about. Uptown vitality. Still struggling to a degree, right? That's still really important to us. Walkability and parking. Parking lot is gonna become, parking lots is gonna become a building. Um, in a year and a half's time. Um, how are people feeling about? Uh, removal of parking. How do people feel our downtown and our city as a whole? Is it still really walkable? Can we do more? Kind of thing.
Yeah, we're kind of starting at the key points. You know, the thing about facilities and infrastructure is there are. Vacant land and buildings that, you know, were from another era from the granite industry and, and. There's upper floors of downtown buildings, so there's. You know, there's, there's, um. Yeah, there's a variety of, of. Those sorts of things. And, um. The other, so that I, I don't think that's really changed a whole lot. Um, I'm just kind of looking at the key points to downtown revitalization. Uh, city, city place is now built and operating. Enterprise Alley has had. Some work, the, um. So, you know, some of those things have changed. On the other hand, there are vacant buildings on Main Street that are eyesores and have been that way for a long time. Um, that, that I think hold back. The whole downtown. So, you know, those things continue to be issues. They were then and I think they still are now. Uh, labor force probably is. Is not. Really changed as best I know. And, and I think the city government is still business friendly. Uh, you know, I think the challenge the city government has right now is just being fully staffed. I don't know that that's really. Part of the, this part of the plan or whatever, but that's a concern. So I don't know if anybody has any. Thoughts or questions about kind of the, the key points, are there? Other things that should have been here or could be here? Okay, issues and challenges, you know, Janet was referring to those, uh, but downtown vitality, you know, there's. There is a challenge with some downtown buildings that are vacant and aren't likely to have anything happening soon or are. Underutilized or, you know, not highest and, and best use. I think there were some changes in the vacant building and minimum housing standards, but I don't think they really get at. The properties that are, we all know are problems. So that's. That's still on the table. Uh, walkability and parking is, um. I think it's something we should continue to look at and discuss. Is, do we have the right balance of parking and? And other things, uh, you know, walkability and bicycle friendly. You know, some, there's been some improvements, but there's probably other things. That could happen, but you know, on the other hand. I know when I wa- I walk downtown regularly. And I wa- you know, going downtown is really great because downhill going back after having a meal is not quite as much fun. Uh, so there are, you know, there are people who would, who still need to be able to park and be. Get downtown, but there's also people who will wanna walk. And, and have it be pedestrian friendly. You know, the bike path is still a work in progress. Like, I don't know that, when that might happen. Uh, building stock. You know, is a. You know, the challenge again, because we have all these old granite sheds. We have upper stories downtown that could be residential, but the cost of developing. Them into residential, particularly. The idea of having to put in an elevator. Uh, and some of the life safety sorts of improvements is very costly. So that's it, that's it, you know, it's an opportunity, but it's, it's an impediment. Um, and you, you know, you can see that. There aren't. That many downtown buildings that. Have vacant upper floors where people have been in a rush, in a rush to develop them. There are some. Or there's some interest. I, I think some of the people doing that are. From my understanding are finding out it's pretty darn expensive and not entirely sure if they can make it work or not. So another. Things is, you know, unemployment. Right now, there's, there's. You know, there's a shortage of workers. Um, but educational attainment. You know, you can see that, that the, you know, the educational attainment of, of. Folks. In the city is, is on average lower than, than. The rest of the state. And, you know, this, as this whole. Plan is kind of. Based around health. You know, one of the statistics is that people with higher levels of education seem to have better health. And less problems, partly because they can afford to get the healthcare they need when they need it. Uh, and access those things. Same with access to healthy food. Uh, you can see there's a lot of discussion about a grocery store. And, you know, the Granite City Grocers was. Kind of a hope and then that just went away, but there's still. There's still perhaps, perhaps a need or something. Uh, you know, I think AR Market would say, well, they fill that role. And maybe they do, but maybe that, maybe they don't fully fill the role, but again, something to. Be thinking about. And I think Barry's reput- reputation and perception is kind of an ongoing. Thing. I was just talking to somebody. Earlier today about scary Barry. And, you know, they said, well, you know, and it kind of came to, so if you've been to other big cities or other places, Barry doesn't seem so scary anymore. You know, so if you've been to New York City or Boston or New Orleans or whatever. Um, Barry seems pretty calm and not so scary, but if your only experience is Barry. Uh, it's hard, it's easier to kind of fall into that. That pattern. So those were some of the things that were listed as issues and challenges. The strengths and opportunities, um. You know, taxes is a, is an opportunity, but. You know, there is a local options tax, but, you know, we've also seen the flood and the, then the pressure on Barry's tax rate. And the fact being that the ground list really hasn't. Hasn't grown. You have a good tax stabilization program, you know, to the extent the city council is willing to. Take use of it. Uh, and the Tiff District is still an ongoing. Process, so with any luck, maybe there'll be some other things that, that come out of that. Regulations and permitting, uh. You know, I think. From my perspective, Barry's pretty good about. Being helpful and help people through the process. But. I think there's a perception in the broader community and maybe broader state even. That all these regulations are getting in the way and causing problems. What I've sometimes see is that happens because people make all their plans and then the last thing they do is go to get a zoning permit. Instead of talking to the planning department. As they're conceiving the project and learning what the, uh. What can be done on that property or some of the things that have to be done that they can build into their plans, because if they come in with plans that are completed that don't, don't fit. At the last minute, then they blame it on the zoning when really it was, uh. In many ways, a lack of planning under, understand process. You know, I've had people.
Twice this week already.
People say the same thing about Act two fifty is if you do it. By the book and you start upfront and you understand how it works. You often can get through it pretty painlessly, but if you don't. Then it's a miserable process that gets dragged out. So. You know, there's, there's some education involved in that too. But we have made changes to the zoning. We're talking about, you know, about more changes, so. It is, it is an important thing in the plan to consider.
It is, David, and, uh, thank you for that. Yeah, I, um. Uh, just to put some of this into perspective of what David was, was, what he means is. But there was a meeting, uh, some of us attended yesterday. Um, where a contractor readily admitted that he doesn't bother to get his permits because A, he doesn't wanna wait forty-five days. I've, my office has never taken more than a week to issue a, a permit. And, uh. Just that, that we're so difficult to work with and. He's a reputable contractor. I know who he is and I just. I just find it really sad that, um. The, as David says, the perception is. I've got my ideas and now I'm just gonna expect to get my permit and you're gonna tell me no. Or. Try to do something different. Um, and people are so much less patient these days. So I applaud this planning commission for the changes. That we've made and thinking outside of the box and trying to be cognizant of. How to help Barry grow in its infill. Knowing that we're gonna, we could potentially see a lot more apartments, um, than single family homes. Um, which could by definition change our demographic greatly, right? So. Uh, all that said, I just, I just wanted you to understand. The kind of things that Michelle and I live with on a daily basis, how people are so. Um, unhappy with rules and regulations. Uh, not an easy place to be in.
When I did zoning work, uh, decades ago. What I always learned is that people hated regulations. And plans unless it was their neighbor that was doing something they didn't like, and then they wanted you to throw the book at them.
Well said.
So, so, you know, it's, it's. It's just, you know, that's a. The nature of the beast and you kind of have to get a thick skin for some of it.
Yes.
So public infrastructure and services, you know, Barry actually is in very good shape in many ways. We have water and sewer capacity. We have, you know, capacity for three-phase electric. There's pretty good internet availability. Uh, in the city, probably could be, be better. Uh, you know, cell reception, I think is pretty good here. Uh, we have good access to the interstate, so there's a lot of, uh, positives, uh, working. For the city. There's also rail access. There's a regional airport nearby, so. There's a lot of, uh, pluses in the public. Infrastructure, but it is a ongoing task to maintain it. And support and programs speaks to, you know, the Berry Area Development Corporation and the Berry Partnership. Uh, that Barry has a designated downtown, so there are some partners that the city can work with. Um, in many ways. And, you know, again, if. As an example. Working on the zoning sort of issues. Is, you know, the. Barrier area development and Berry Partnership could be very helpful is, you know, people come in and are thinking about locating. In Barry, uh. Those groups can help. Make the process smoother by getting. By, by enabling some earlier meetings with. City folks to talk about plans and, and. Just to understand the process and what, what, if there's impediments, you know them before you've invested money and. In plans or you've, you know what you have to do to make it all fit. So I think that's, you know, that continues to be. You know, strength and opportunity, but, but would be better. So that's kind of the overview. Then, then the next parts are goals and strategies and, and. So, you know, this is identifying issues and, and. Having, thinking about some actions that could be taken to help. Uh, meet those things. So I don't know if you want me to continue running through like this, folks, or if, if you want, if, if this is kind of too slow. Anyone have any thoughts? Okay, well, I'll keep going. Oh.
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in and, um, I just had a few overall, all, um, thoughts and comments I wanted to share. Um, number one, that a lot of the, this section seemed to me to still be pretty relevant to today. Um, I think a lot of the. The goals are still things that seem like they should be goals going forward. Um, I did note the, the grocery store in particular seems like one that we felt like we were gonna. Tick off that box. When they did this plan and unfortunately that hasn't happened, so. That would be great to see that happen. I think the other thing for me, um, is the one about. Perception. And, um, I mean, I've lived in the city now for. Eleven years. And I, I moved here and I thought Barry is such a great place. Why are people down on Barry? And I find that it's not people that are from outside Barry that are down on Barry. It, it's mostly people that have been here a long time. So like. To me, the public relations perceptions thing has to start with. People that are here. Um, and hopefully it's, hopefully it is changing. I feel like it's changing, but. Um, I'm always so disappointed when I hear people saying that. People have a bad perception of Barry, because I travel all over the state and people do not have a bad perception of Barry. That I talk to. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Yep, no, agreed. And it's, it's a challenge and it's sort of inbred somehow. I don't know. But, you know, new people come to Barry and they love it. And they, they choose Barry over other places because they like the vibe and they, they like. The activity and it's a good place. Raise a young family and all those things. Uh, Becky.
Yeah, I'm curious, um. Like, I know a plan is a plan and it's a snapshot in time, like, there's, there's never an expectation that all of this happens. Um, but I'm curious like how the plan is used. You know, like, is this, does this, do city staff use this to inform decisions that? You all are making, um, like. Should this be informing the decisions that we're making as a planning commission? I'm just curious how, like. How this actually becomes reality? Or who's responsible for that?
Lot of people.
Yeah, I, like, I think so. That's what, that was what I thought, but I'm like, I'm, I'm curious what, what it really looks like.
Well, I mean, ultimately, it's the city council's plan. They adopt, you know, they're the final word on it. Um. And you kind of hope they're familiar with it and, and as new counselors come on that they get the plan and. And look at it, but I think the things that are probably, you know, important, like in the economic development section is let's. You know, look at goals and strategies, um, and, and. That's where, and, and, you know, next steps, and if you look at the next steps. It talks about things to do and then it lists partners in the process. And one thing the planning commission could do. Is look at some of those next steps. And think about what's happened with them. And if anything, what's been done, and some of them are moving along just fine. Uh, you know, the next steps in implement the state approved. Uh, Tiff, that's, that's been done, that's ongoing. Um, you know, there's still a group working on. Best utilizing what's left. In, in the, in the. That the financing to, to do something. You know, on the other hand, open a grocery store in Barry. As, as fallen by the wayside, maybe we should be talking about that. Maybe we decide that. That AR market has met that, that need, or maybe we think something else is needed, but. You know, that would be another one to revisit. Um, the merchants row. Um, project, I, I think is some, some work's been done, but not the big project. Um, so, you know, is there anything else that should be happening on that now? Uh, the main, North Main to Summer Street, we're updating now. So that, that's, that's, uh, making progress. So those, I mean, those, that would be the things we might want to really focus on is things where. Where some actions were identified and, and. And maybe we could have, spend time evaluating where we are with those things. And then the other thing is benchmarks, which is how do you measure? Um, success, so to speak. And kind of I looked through some of these and, and it's, I think it's hard. These are, these are, it's a challenge, benchmarks of this order are a challenge because. Um. You know, per capita income goes up when, you know, it's going up lately, I think. Because of inflation, but that doesn't mean it's really. Where we might want it to be. Um. Uh, you know, and, and you know, there's other, you know, vacancy rates have dropped to below one percent as far as I know. Um, does that mean we've done great work on our plan and that's what? Created it? I don't think so. So that, you know, the benchmarks sometimes are kind of a. A challenge.
Yeah, I look at them as informers. But you're right, Becky, that it's a plan, it's a snapshot in time. It was, uh, wh- when it's finalized it by the commission, it is. The best attempt at the next eight years of, of, uh, future planning. What, what we want to see with the city. Um, will we, will we tick off all the projects? No, um, do we have to? No, um. Should we aspire to get some of them? Of course. Um, because at the time they were really good ideas, uh, talked about and, um. The other thought is. What was good five years ago might thoroughly look different to all of you and your focus. Um, could be in a totally different direction when it comes to one or many, right? So, um, it is a, a plan, it's a, it's a guiding. It's, it's a guide, um. Yeah.
But when things do go through the state process or act two fifty, I think the plan gets looked at as part of the. You know, development should comply with, with what the plan is. So we are.
Yeah, uh, a lot of cases, our plan is looked at for a myriad of other reasons.
Yeah. But that, that's often external. Rather than the internal looking and measuring how we're doing and what. What needs to be done or what maybe has changed that these aren't high priority anymore. And as, you know, on any of these things, some of it is just the capacity to do them. Capacity in terms of staffing and in terms of dollars. So I don't know, it's, it's, uh, seven oh six. I don't know how long you want, folks want to meet. We usually try to end around seven. So we can, you know. Put this back on the agenda next time and, and maybe what we should do is just. Put just the economic development in and bite that piece off and kind of get through that and then. We can move on to housing at a, another meeting. Those are both pretty. Pretty meaty. So what do folks think?
That sounds like a good approach.
Okay, so why don't we, um, finish this and we'll, we'll get back. To the economic development and I think we should plan on specifically talking about goals and strategies. And then, um, the actions. So the next steps and. And that we'd get, we'd be getting a lot done if we really dove into those at the next meeting. So that brings us in the agenda, I think, to just, you know, note that the next. Board meet, the next, uh, commission meeting is July eleventh. And remember, we just agreed that we'll have a public hearing at that. Meeting, so hope everybody can, can be there. Uh, the next item is staff updates. I think I took some, you already did some of your staff update anyhow. But is there anything else, Janet?
That's okay. Um, I'll just hit some high points, um. A lot of property sales, uh, if any of you are looking at the table that I. Updated every month, I'm, I'm astounded at the, uh. At the cost of a single family home these days. I think my thirty-three-year-old daughter is never gonna be able to buy a house at the rate things are going, so, um, but yeah, um. There's no slowing of property sales in Barry City either. Um, although we have a lot of vacant buildings, you know, some of our storefronts are looking a little dusty. Um, it's, there's still real estate moving. The assessors, uh, are looking to lodge the abstract grand list, which means the draft. Uh, on June twenty-fourth, so. I have heard them say that they have made about. Two and a half million dollars in changes to the grand list. Between the, our assessors and the contract appraisers. Um, they've been, so the contractor appraisers. I gave them the list of outstanding permits that have never been looked at by any assessor. Uh, as far as somebody's value. I, I could tell you over half of the city is still looking at a twenty oh six assessed value on your property. And so this is not going to be an easy thing, uh, at all. But it's going to be a healthy outcome, right? Um, always trying to be positive about it. The, the appraisers got us caught up on the permitting. So someone who put on a deck literally six years ago. Who has never had a property value revision because of a deck. That got done. And the assessors have been looking at the flood damaged properties. And just trying to get those folks right sized for this very moment in time. So maybe they can afford repairs.
So.
So that, that's gonna go out in two weeks and anybody who's. A, assessment has changed, we'll get a notice in the, in the mail.
That was gonna be my, that was my question. See, I was one of those people, I'm curious.
Yeah. Yeah, so you'll get an, you get your notice in the mail and you have fourteen days to, uh. Uh, reach out to the assessor's office and ask them if you want to. Have a grievance hearing or you want to submit something. Uh, a lot of people don't always, uh, have a hearing, but they submit a, a written letter or whatever. It's, it's. Entirely up to the property owner. I think Larry and Carly are gonna try to hold grievances over a two-week period. Um, some in the evening to accommodate people who work all day, rather than trying to get out of work and. Run over to the city to, for fifteen minutes and, and air their. Their, uh, upsetness and then have to go back to work, so. Um, I think that's a great change, uh, to be accommodating in that respect. Uh, with the school vote. You folks are still gonna have a delay in the tax bill. It has to do with paying out the education fund and getting, hopefully getting, uh, the, uh, school, uh, vote passed. Um. But I don't think you're gonna have to wait and make your first quarter payment. Uh, I think, was it last year you, you all had to pay? Like in October and then turn around and pay again in November. I just, I know it was back to back for you folks. It's not gonna be that bad this time. So for, for anyone who's making quarterly payments, it's not, there's gonna be a little bit better gap this time, so. And that's another thing that Larry and Carly really wanted to. Help the residents of Barry City when they get their tax bills is there's the healthy amount of time between quarterly payments. So that's going on. Um, there is no shortage of permitting, uh, um. So right now, Michelle and I, um, uh, management, uh, is working four ten-hour days. So Michelle and I, for the summer, we trade off. She takes Mondays off and I take Fridays off. By noon, we had seventeen people walk through the door and hand me. Some kind of permit application for something. Between flood hazard, electrical. Nothing is slowing down. Usually, um, historically, people get their tax money. They want to build, they want to add on, they want to refurbish, they want to fix, and now we're in the construction mode and. It's, it's still going on, so, um, not a bad thing by any means.
Um, people are waiting in line for contractors to get. To them on their schedule.
That's what I hear. Electricians, contractors, plumbers, you name it. Um, if anyone is looking for something to do with their life, I suggest, you know, going into the trades. Um. Yeah, there, there's a lot of, lot going on at the council level, which, um, you all can watch the, uh. The, the videos, you can participate. There's just a lot going on there with. Again, the north end recovery and what it is the city's gonna do. Um, we talked today, I think really importantly. Um, the last thing I should bring to you is had a great conversation with. The executive director of the Good Subaltern Haven Shelter on Seminary Street. He has been told he has to raise that building. He was not damaged by the flood. But you don't have to be damaged by this most recent flood to end up having to. Raise your building if you're going to spend in improvements greater than fifty percent of the assessed value. It's a hard pill for people to swallow. Um, he, he had the money and, um, he's been told he should fill in his basement. So for a shelter, that means, you know, that's where all the washing machines are. That's where all the freezers are. Um, this, that, and the other thing. And so we really tried to think outside of the box. Um, if he did fill in the basement, was there a shed? Or a part of the building that could be turned into the ancillary needs area that the shelter could use? Um. So that is one thing, one example of. The kinds of conversations that are going on because of last year's flood. And it's still not easy. It's still very painful, um. It's, it's really sad still, so. I just wanted you all to, to know, you know, this one example. Is still across the board, so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's pretty tough.
Yeah.
So any, anything else, Janet?
I, I probably could talk for another ten minutes, but, um, just know that there's a lot going on. And, um, uh, trying to keep moving forward, um, landlords, um. Uh, coming up who can't code enforcement, who are, um, doing their job. Uh, hasn't been easy from the former inspectors who didn't necessarily, um. Uh, it wasn't that they didn't follow code, but they weren't inspecting as, as should have been, and so. It's getting everybody back, back to where they were ten years ago, and so, um. Just, uh, just a great thing going on.
Yeah, but, and not everybody's happy about that.
No, not at all. Uh, got an email from, uh, Tracy Lewis, uh, at, at the Great Partnership. Uh, don't forget Heritage Festival is at the end of July. Um, I think all of you know that the, um. Uh. plumbers markets are back in the park, right in front of where the gazebo is. Those are on Wednesdays. Food truck Thursdays and concerts are gonna start Thursday, July eleventh. Uh, so do you have any questions?
We won't be there.
Need anything?
On July eleventh.
No.
Cause we have a.
No, we have a meeting. Maybe we should go to the food truck and set it, set it up at a picnic table, you guys.
No, we could set up our hearing here.
Yeah.
We may have good attendance.
There you go. Um, but she had sent out that email and so I'm guessing that her website is updated.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, to reflect, you know, it's, it, July is coming and a lot happens in our little city in July, so. Yeah.
So, uh, next item is roundtable. Do any commissioners have anything? Uh, it's your opportunity to bring up, uh, anything you want. Anyone have anything for the good of the group? If not, the next item on the agenda is adjournment. Would welcome a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, the, that's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, raise your hand. Think we're done. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Jana. Have a happy Fourth of July, everyone.
Yeah.
Thank you guys.
Enjoy the heat next week. See ya.